Call to order, if please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, we'll do roll call.
Perry.
Here.
Skatulski.
Here.
Wong.
Here.
Needing. Here. Oz Looper.
She's excused.
Wait. Mayor Gardner.
Here. Just barely have a quorum, we expect Councilor Wakeman to be here any minute. We'll move forward with the minutes and the approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through B as presented, waving the reading.
Second.
We have a motion, we have support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carried. Bills of warrant, item C, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to propose the approved bills of warrant number 14213 paid in the amount of $1,787.56 and the bills warrant number 14214 unpaid in the amount of $10,084.15 as presented, waving the reading.
Support.
Motion and support, thank you to Councilor Perry for carrying that entire side of the table herself. Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Wong.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much, motion carried. We don't have a presentation, move on to the mayor's report. Should I pass out?
He is on his way.
Councilor Wakeman is on his way. Amber has taken the lead on our compliance with the Michigan Earned Sick Time Act. We're consulting with FSBR, who is a consultant who specializes in this. We do have money budgeted in our legal account that will cover that. We had initial.
Okay, it sounds like.
Yep. We had a. We had an initial assessment and they're working on it, it was very helpful so far. Amber's running with it, doing a great job. We will need to make some changes on who we pay with the 1099 form. You know, we discussed that as council and we'll, making those adjustments, we'll add people to the regular payroll, including the election workers, we found out we need to do that. There are probably a few changes in when we pay, how often we pay, those are mandated by the state. So, we're putting all that together, putting it in our plan. This does cover all of our full and part-time employees, firefighters, election workers, DPW personnel. And that's not all-inclusive there, that everyone who works for the city. This will be presented for council approval when we get the plan all written out and approved and reviewed by our legal team. It's still in process, we will answer questions as we, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. The rules are still kind of in jail, they're on a state level. They, there's still some questions that haven't been finally answered, but we're 99% there. So, when we get the plan all together, we'll bring it to council for approval.
And make sure we're gonna have the budget for the extra taxes to, if we put people on payroll for that.
Yes. Yeah, yep, that will be, we'll calculate all that. I had some discussion with David Leach from the Monroe County Road Commission about Gania Road. If you've been down there, there are two roads, as you know, that you can, two ways of egress for the city, Gania Road and Luna Pier Road. Gania Road saw a significant amount of traffic last year, more truck traffic than it was ever designed to see because of the bridge problem. Then we had a really hard freeze, the first really hard freeze winter we've had in a couple of years, and it really took its toll on that road. It is broken up beyond patching, cold patch isn't gonna do it. Last time we had some spray patching by the county to kind of glue it together. It pretty much is beyond patching now. Our only option would be if we tore out sections and did paving of sections, but David Leach said that, he said, "That's an option, but it's not a very good one." It will only buy you at the most two years and you'll have to start over. He said, "It's good money just thrown away if you do it that way, because it's all gonna have to be done." He came out with a proposal, I actually looked at it and I really thank the road commission for doing that for us. They don't have to do that, but they want to partner with us. And he gave us some really good advice, he really knows roads being in it for his entire career there. We will probably consult our engineers and I'll probably put together some kind of package to get some bids on that. We do have enough in the local road budget to cover that, we will have to budget the money. It's in the Act 51 funds. We're, I wish we could pave all the roads, because there's just some terrible roads, especially the residential streets. Unfortunately, it was a great thing in the mid-'70s, the goal of the city was to pave all the roads. They did that, they accomplished it, they did them all about the same time and they're all 50-plus years old. So, I wish we could do something with one of the, with the roads. This one, it's probably a little worse than Harold Drive, Harold Drive is really bad. I think this one is doable though, it's affordable. It's probably just over 1,000 feet that we have to pave. But I'll have some more on that, because I think we're gonna have to put it up for bid to do a crush and then repave of it. There's just no saving it the way it is right now. So, I'll have more on that later.
Was there something in the award that spelled that out?
As far as what?
Or in that, not the award.
Yeah, I was gonna say, not the award, but we got a guess of what we should expect that to cost from David Leach and we will present that to our engineer. Really, if you put it up for bid, you have to tell them exactly what you want, otherwise everybody's bidding on something completely different. You might get the lowest bid that's totally not what you want. Or someone, you might get an extremely high bid because they think we want more. So, you really have to spell it out with the engineering and that's where, that's really our next step, is consult our engineer to see what they, what our engineering firm would recommend to do with that and put it out for bid as specing asphalt and everything else, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's kind of interesting that the road commission would give some type of estimate, but then have all these assumptions that they leave out.
Yeah, and David Leach just has done so much of this. He's given, he told me he'd just give it his best guess, it's not binding, but it's his best guess that it's, from his experience, that's the kind of thing he would see and that's what he would do with that road. And he saw it and that's his professional opinion, but obviously we have to get that confirmed. And it a little bit depends on what the base is there. I think it's a, I think there is a solid base there, because he gave me some things to look for. If there's not a solid base, we're not getting any dirt percolating up or nothing in the road, it's all gravel, it's all water, so, and that's one of the oldest roads in the city, it's older than Harold Drive. So, it probably has several layers of stone and asphalt underneath it. So, that's actually a good sign, and it does drain really well. Harold Drive, on the other hand, is a problem because it doesn't drain. It needs to be graded before it can really be paved. You see all the puddles along there, making a mess of people's driveways and everything else. That was a lot harder road to deal with. Just milling it and a couple inches of asphalt on it would probably run about a million dollars, but it needs actually a little more than that. The good thing is there is action in Lansing, they are negotiating for local road funding. The state stepped up, a lot of the state routes, those were addressed. Now it's moving down to the local level and I did contact our representative, sent him a photo of our road to show him how bad it is and what kind of, what kind of shape we're in and said, "Try to get something done, we really need this, we're in dire straits here." So, they are working on it, they're negotiating. If you want to contact your representative, communicate our urgency, you're welcome to do that. But right now, we can't wait for that, this road is really bad. It was, it's been a very intense week, as Charlie will agree with, I think. I was working with Chris Hennessy from F&amp;V, engineer, Fleis and Vandenbrink. They work with small communities like us, they help you get grants and we are applying for, it's congressional-directed spending, earmarks is another word for it. They're very, very hard to get, but you can always ask. So, we're putting together a plan to try to apply for some money there and we won't know for a long time. But there's a couple of projects we're looking at, one of them is restoring the pier, doing a re, pretty much a recap and maybe a reface. And that would involve engineering too, to make sure we are not disturbing the habitat there for the great walleye fishing and we want to maintain that ecosystem, but we want to preserve our dike, because we can't keep patching it, there's not enough there to hold the patches down. So, we know we're gonna have to do a significant project to recap that if we're gonna keep it. We're gonna apply for some money there and see what we get. Any questions? If not, we'll move along here. We have no fire department report and no police report, we do have a good building report there. Like to thank a certain member of council for really beautifying our city and they're doing their part and it's reflected in the billing report, but a lot of improvements going on in the city and that's always good to see. Committee reports, DDA, none, flood, none. Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec has it going on. If you go to their meetings, they're very busy, you saw the minutes there, they're extensive and Parks and Rec, they're really doing a lot and really accomplishing a lot, I'm really, really pleased. You want to expound, Diana?
I'm just excited, our next event will be the Easter egg hunt in cooperation with the fire department and we've gotten some very generous donations for the tennis and pickleball courts, which we're really gonna concentrate on this summer, so let's all go play tennis and pickleball.
Yep. Yep, and they're working out a plan of really improving that. It's really an asset, there's really a lot of interest in the city from the residents of getting that fixed up. Pickleball is just booming all over the country. We have the planning minutes. Old business, we tabled the resolution number 977 wastewater treatment plant rates. Dave and I were able to meet with Aaron Goldsmith of LaSalle Township and David Thompson from the Drain Commission. We don't really have control over their rates, we told them that this is what, a little discrepancy in the way they bill. It's not being evenly distributed and they are taking care of that on their own to bring it in line with exactly what ours will be. So, we wanted to let them know, our rates are pretty solid and we're confident. Dave did a fantastic job with that rate study and with the funds that we are maintaining for future repairs. We really need to do that and that was spelled out in the rate study and we are meeting those goals. The wastewater treatment plant is not a moneymaker for the city, it can't be legally. That's why we do these rate studies, to make sure we have enough to maintain the plant. We're not gonna be hit with any big surprises. We place pumps and infrastructure as they wear out and that's where the funds and with our USDA grant, they watch it very closely to make sure we're doing this right, that we're not gonna just let the plant run down, we're gonna keep doing the maintenance. And Dave is really doing a fantastic job and he, I really believe is the reason that we didn't have to raise the rates this time, that we are maintaining, because he takes really good care of that equipment and he's on top of it. When something goes, he gets it done and the plant's running very well and very efficiently. Master plan approval, this is an approval to distribute it for review. It's on page four of the master plan of the layout and it was approved by the Planning Commission. Now it's our, the ball's in our court to approve the master plan for distribution to our neighboring communities per the Planning Enabling Act. And then it'll come back, we'll have a further action to do the final acceptance. We can do change, still have time to do changes in there before we do the final acceptance. But this is to, the Planning Commission really believes that it's ready for review now, for the final review. Sewer refund request, we had a vacant house, 4438 Buckeye Street, that had a broken pipe over the wintertime, they were gone for the winter when we got that really cold weather, they had a frozen pipe and when they found it, they saw their exorbitant water bill. We have, when requested, forgiven the sewer portion of that, of different bills when that happens, because we never see that water, that water goes on the ground, it does not go into the drains and it doesn't go through our sewage treatment plant. So, we like to be fair with that, that we're not charging somebody for wastewater that we did not treat. It never, never got to the plant, it was fresh water going on the ground under the house. They did the repairs, but unfortunately had a big bill there. They still have to pay the water portion because water was delivered to that location, but it never made it to the treatment plant.
Did somebody else did the math on this?
I have 392.66.
That's what I got too.
Okay. That is, what we do is the, this one was easy because all they pay is a base rate during the wintertime, there's no water usage. So, it's very easy to establish a base rate and then we forgave the portion that was over the base rate, because none of that water, no water went into our sewer system for those two months. There was just no usage on the bill, none at all, until that break. Appointment of Greg Gregory Voight to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're thanked Greg for stepping up to that, I think he was, will be a great fit. I sent him the training materials, he looked over it and agreed that something that he would be good at and I really appreciate him stepping up. Appointment of Sean Looper to the Planning Commission, I am making that nomination tonight and I think she's a good fit there. That's all I have for new business, any questions or discussion? If not, we'll move on to the community input. You are welcome to address the council. Yes. Good.
From 4423, oh, much as I like the signs in front of the chateau, I asked you about the ones at the crosswalk by the post office. Everybody's totally disregarding that. Anybody who has a license should know to stop when someone's walking. They don't, so.
Can I clarify, walking across Harold, I mean across Luna Pier Road?
Yeah.
From like the chateau?
So, I stopped and walked across, almost got hit by a motorcycle, you didn't stop.
At Luna Pier Road and Liquid?
And Liquid?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, I just wanted to make sure I'm talking right.
And that's, who's to say they're gonna even pay attention to the sign? I don't know, but I mean, anyway, and secondly, and this is way off, somebody that I know drove north, called me and said, "When did they change to Luna? When are we gonna paint the head?"
That is, that is.
Well, that's what he said, "Oh, what, is it Luna now?"
Yes.
Okay.
That is scheduled when they, yep, I see that too.
I see that all the time and I'm like, "Still Luna."
Well, I don't go north.
Yeah.
So, I don't see it and I was like, "Oh, I wasn't aware." But the sign, I don't know if there's, you can put a sign there, I don't know.
Yes, they, this, it's actually cast in, they just have to paint it. And there's a Luna Pier, the Luna Pier seal or the Luna Pier logo is up there too.
She's talking about the sign by the post office?
Yeah, yeah, to me that was.
Oh, okay. Sign by the.
The sign, the crosswalk.
Okay. Well, I'm out of the loop, because, I thank you for bringing, yeah. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
If you noticed, the bridge is going down, they're not painting it on that side either. There's, the sides are, so.
All right, well, I'll, I'll look into that, I know M, the overpass bridge, it's in the works.
Hi.
Hi.
Kelly Teller, superintendent at the school, 2400 Mason Eagles Drive. Want to thank those of you who have attended our bond information meetings and I'm just here to remind the rest of the community members that we have two left for the consideration that we're asking on May 6th for $16 million at 2.69 mils. Excuse me, I did bring some information here, I know you guys can't post it, but whoever would like to take it. If not, then it could be disposed of, but in that packet tonight is just a reminder of the two meetings left on March 18th and April 24th. And then in our last information meeting, community members had asked for specifics on cost of our project. So, this document here outlines the costs that our construction manager has put together. This is all on our website, under our body page, but it's just easier for people to grab and look at. Another document is from our financial advisor that lists all the finances that have been calculated for taxable value within our communities. And one that I've extracted from that is actually the debt millage across Monroe County as compared to other districts and you can see that Mason has zero here. We are in dire need, we know this, and we're only asking for critical updates and priority needs. So, we appreciate if you guys come to get informed, because you need to make an informed decision on May 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will point out, I know you know this, but the city doesn't take a position one way or the other. We can distribute information and Kelly's been good about that, she's never pressured us, but I'd want to let everybody know that, that we don't.
Off for term.
Oh. Kelly?
Kelly Leral, 4350 South Sixth Street. This is, you know, respectfully, as respectfully deliberate as I can, I know a lot of people are working hard for what they believe in. 30 years, what was everybody doing 30 years ago? I was 24 years old, it's a long time. Tax millages play a crucial role in funding public services like those that Jim just mentioned. And thank you, Jim, for again mentioning our master plan. Long-term unkept millages pose a serious risk to taxpayers, 30 years, unkept. The biggest issue that you need to keep in mind is that this is not the only millage that the school is coming on coming for. And I do not believe, after all the homework which I have done, which is over there on that table, on September 11th, Pete and I met at the school for several hours. And I apologize, it's very hard for me, I have a lot to share, I'm trying to do so as condensed as I can in my time below. Long-term tax millages cause future generational tax burden and financial unaccountability. While they are introduced with good intentions, their long-term impact can lead to inefficiency, financial strain and lack of oversight. We have many needs here in our community, we talked about this many times, the fire department, the roads, strategic planning, all of that. Mason is coming back to the ballot on May 6th for a 30-year unkept bond millage for $16 million for critical facility needs. I do not consider adding central air to three of the buildings based on all of the needs that are on our, in our school, a priority. You know, a significant portion of the dollars are going to updating the ventilation units. I think there's a lot more critical needs here. The bond is 4.75% interest with 14.6 million dollars in interest. That's over $30 million for us to pay back. The issue is, is that this plan does not put money into the most dire building, which everyone complains about, is the elementary school. So, verbatim, from the school, when I met with them, you will be coming back for another bond in three, five, seven years. This was stated at the first meeting, they will be coming back. And just so you know, I actually think they need far more money than what they're asking for on a tax base of about 6,800 people and in a school that's lost over 33% of its students in 20 years. We are now under 1,000 students and have a tax base of 6,800 residents. So, I like this first bond to that of your engine going out and you replace engine in your car and you've invested in that car. And now you have a transmission to put in. So, if we invest in this plan, which I do not, I am no way behind this plan. Mason has never had a facility plan, they don't have a maintenance plan, they don't have a strategic plan. In 2020, and I realize there were different leaders, they wanted to rip down the money, the whole school and building that we were still giving them money for on the sinking fund. Mason received 1.7, they rewarded 1.76 million dollars in emergency relief funding, which is like 3/4 of a million dollars more than Erie Luna Pier and the sale received in emergency relief funding. They've put dollars into buildings that they already want to rip out. When you don't have a facility plan, you are wasting money. I do not want to finance for 30 years ceiling tiles and a 10-year fix on a septic system that they have blatantly ignored treating. I have personally spoke to 20 years of services, all of the people that serviced Mason Septic Tank. They refuse to take the chemicals, they don't treat it right, that's just one example. I realize the school is in dire state, but so is our community, as we hear every time we come to these meetings. We have a very small tax base and we need to put our money in the hands of trusted fiduciaries. And I realize that the school does need support. But when you lose 33% of your volumes over 20 years, you should be working on rightsizing. In another 20 years, we'll probably have between 600 and 700 kids on the campus. This to me does not warrant building a new elementary school, it warrants rightsizing. I also do not believe that there's extreme transparency behind this. I realize that the survey is done for specific purposes. I have my own 34 years of corporate experience from the frontline to governance at a C-suite level in a $7 billion company. No company on the planet would invest hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in equipment in a building they're planning to tear down. They verbatim said, "We asked and we can reuse the ventilation units in a new build." That to me is serious red flags. If a company would not do this with their own money, the taxpayers should absolutely say, "No, you're not doing it with mine." I would not have a business if I ran my business that way. And for people that think I feel this way because I have property, I'm gonna tell you what every business owner does, they push these costs out. This is not going to. This is not going to cost me. I care about it passionately, and I believe in it. And people need to do their homework. If you think that this is a good plan, and that this can be trusted after decades of failing to invest in it, in their own business, which is why it is in the position that it is, please do your homework, and please show up in both know.
Thank you. The floor is open. Marilyn?
If we invest in this first bond, we will be forced to support the plan in the future. I do not trust the plan. And in 20 years, when there's 600 kids on the campus, we will have another 20 years to go.
Yeah. We, we do have to move on.
And if the school decides to stop to pay for it.
Yes, Marilyn. Yep. You have the floor, Marilyn.
Marilyn Foster, 4360 South Fifth Street. First, I want to thank Kelly for the tremendous amount of effort that she's putting into this. And I want to thank her personally, and then I just not gonna, I support everything that she's saying. And I am concerned about the money, because when we came here, and my taxes are going to go up. I'm not complaining about my taxes. And I'm happy to pay them. But, when I look at the rates that could potentially come in, and I could just, my house, and this, the a tremendous amount of money is going to come from the people that live on the lake, because the tax base is different. It's because of the lake, I get it. But, potentially, you could be looking at upwards of $8,000 a year in taxes on the property. And I, I fear that people are going to stop leaving. We're trying so hard with efforts to get Lunapier back in good shape, and this is going to put people over the edge. It's already, I mean, I used to hate that expression, "I'm on a fixed income." My mother used to say that all the time. Well, I get it now, you know? And it's like, this is a ridiculous amount of money. And I don't have a mortgage. What about people that are carrying mortgages and that? But I want to know, and I know that the city doesn't take a stance on it, but how do we get state reps or anybody here to have a meeting? To speak to the constituents about this? Like, you know what Kelly's doing? She can't do it alone. What do we do next? I'm just, you don't have to answer me right now, but that's a question I want to have, is like to see if we can get state reps and people, what have they applied for? For grants? I know that in Mass, where I just moved from, you know, we've, we've got 12, 12 schools in town that they're redone by writing grants and getting them all funded. So, I want to know what's, what's been going on. But I would definitely like to see if we can get Senator, state reps and that to come and talk to folks about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Gardner, 10005 Allen Street. I seem to be stuck in loopholes between the county and the city. I'm having health issues with mold at my apartment. And I call the county, and the county tells me it's the city's issue. I contact the city, and it tells me it's county's issue. And I'm having health issues, I have to prove. And in the past, I've had legal issues where I could prove it outside of the city of Lunapier, but not in the city of Lunapier. And I really like to get this resolved for my health and for the other residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The floor is open. If you have, last chance to address council for this meeting. Yes, Freddie.
Freddie Mead-Meyer, 100750 Allen Street. I know you guys have a master plan in front of you guys, and a portion of it is omitted. I'm part of the Planning Commission. And just like to say that, you know, hey, we want to submit this information to you guys to give everybody an opportunity to take a look at it. And then, for the legal portion, to take a look at the information in regards to the old...
Consumers?
Yes, consumers. Thank you. You know, you get up here in the hot seat. It's hard to remember, to admit that. But take a look at that, and, you know, try and push that forward so we can take a look and get things, you know, updated. So, I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to being here to speak on that, but it's okay. We are trying to do things efficiently and effectively. We know we have some changes going up, and there's a person being recommended, so we're looking forward to that. That's great news. And I appreciate everything that you guys do, first and foremost. You guys are always in the hot seat. You have more things coming your way, because we're being pressed for, again, that marijuana thing, and, you know, some different property changes. And we always appreciate what you guys do. So, as we move forward with some of the things that are presented to us, thank you so much for that. And some of the other things, you know, you guys have heavy weights on your shoulders. So, thank you again. I appreciate your time. That's all I have.
As we do you, Fred.
Yes. Yeah, if I can, if I can comment, planning has been, they've had a harder workload than, ever since I've been involved. They've, they've been through things that, any tremendous workload that I've never seen. And it's all really good for the city. And it's on their shoulders, and they're doing a great job. And I want to thank every one of them. Anybody else? If not, we'll close the community input portion of the meeting, move on to council action. Resolution number 977. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the sewer rate adjustment resolution number 91, excuse me, 977, with the city of Lunapier rates remaining the same, and the sale township rates changing to mirror the rates in Lunapier through 2027 as presented in way of the reading.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Wakeman.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Master plan approval for distribution. Do I have a motion?
Has everybody reviewed it? Do you guys feel it's good to let others? Or do you want to table it?
I think we have a, I think we're ready to, to move on it, because our Planning Commission did review everything, made their changes, and they are, it's got, it has their stamp of approval for council.
Oh, was that that meeting you were in?
Yep.
They went through it.
Yep.
Extensively, yeah.
Yep.
Yes, they did. Did their due diligence.
With that, do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the distribution of the master plan draft for review by the public and neighboring jurisdictions as recommended by the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion, support. Any discussion? I will point out, this is not the final approval. This is further review before it comes back to us.
And there could be changes.
And there could be changes.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
What is, what is meant by neighboring jurisdictions?
Our Erie Township, the South Township, Monroe County. Although Monroe County used, used to have a planning department. They folded, but it is following the Planning Enabling Act. It's one of the requirements for approval of the master plan. We got to let them look at it, too.
Just getting you to say it out loud.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? Let's go to a roll call vote.
Wakeman.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Huang.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion approved. Sewer fund request by Stella Oley.
I propose a motion to approve funding for Stella Oley in the amount of $392.66 for sewer usage fees due to water pipe break as presented.
Support.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion?
I think people should realize that this happens quite often in the city, and anybody that's not going to be here over the winter should take extra precautions to get that water shut off where the pipes don't break, and we don't have to go through this. And plus, you know, like, maybe put in that newsletter.
Yeah, we can.
Please.
Yeah, we can inform. And along those lines, you know, I've, I've talked to South County Water about alerting customers, and they, they do when they get a really high reading like that. But it's, a lot of times, too late.
But it's too late.
Yes.
So, if they take, you know, precautions.
Yeah, and there is a penalty, because you do have to pay for the water. We can't forgive that. You got to pay for the water that they bought and delivered to your house. Any other discussion? Now, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Huang.
Yes.
Wakeman.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Appointment of Greg Voight to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I propose a motion to approve the appointment of Gregory Voight to the Zoning Board for Appeals for three-year term, expiring 1/15/2028, per Mayor Gardner's nomination.
I'll support that.
We have a motion, support. Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Huang.
Yes.
Wakeman.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much, and thank you to Greg Gregory for stepping up to that task. I think I do a fantastic job. Do I have a motion? Per my nomination of Shawnee Bloslooper to the, Post Looper to the Planning Commission? It goes by the way of Planning Commission seat works. The mayor's nomination, subject to the approval of council. So, I, I am making that nomination, and do we have a motion? To approve?
I propose a motion to approve the appointment of Shawnee Blas Looper to the Planning Commission for a three-year term, expiring 1/15/2028, per Mayor Gardner's nomination.
Support. We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Skatulski.
Yes.
Wakeman.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Gardner.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carried. She steps up to a noble task there, and I sent her, I'll send her all of the planning information I have. I sent some, but I'll get it all out.
Do we still have open positions?
We do.
Yes, we do.
Yep. And I am looking, if you know somebody you think would be good for that, I'm, I would love to hear. Council input and information. I think we'll start on this end. I'm also on. Counselor Skatulski?